I pledge allegiance to the Constitution. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, March 2, 2020, and the time being 7:00 P.M. The meeting of Greensburg City Council for all that work. At this time, please silence all your electronic devices to comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. The city requests that dispense in this meeting a complete and voluntary anonymous survey that is available on the table in the back of the room. As a reminder, there are a few new folks in the room this evening. If you are here to speak on a topic that is on the agenda, please sure to just fill out one of the cards there on the table and put it in the basket or give to Kristen one of the two if you're not the presenter. So if you're here to present on something, don't worry about that. If you're just here to comment on something, please submit one of those for each of the topics you wish to speak on. Roll call, please. Brenda?
Yes, sir. Jamie Kane.
Here.
Daryl Poling.
I'm here.
Vieta McKenzie.
Here.
Kevin Fleetwood.
Here.
Rick Anstall.
Here.
Okay. You should have had a copy of the February 3 minutes on your table when you came in. Any additions or corrections to those?
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
All of those in favor? Signal my five as saying aye.
Aye.
Does opposed? Old business. Chief Bridges, second round reading of UTV inside-by-side ordinance on city streets. This is number 2019-40 because this was started in 2019.
So there was some changes that were amended by the city attorney, which you should have those. And also in front of you is a plate that we've come up with that will kind of signify that they are registered for the city of Greensburg. So I guess I'm here just to answer any questions, any concerns from what you have read.
Go on the smaller plate then?
Yes. Still large enough to be visible. The communications director came up with that design. I can't take credit for it, so.
Now, in your inspection, is that going to be like Saturday or?
It's going to be Monday through Friday. Mainly Monday through Friday just for the fee collection. That way, records clerk is available to write out receipts or whatnot, or myself, the assistant chief. So, yeah, like I said, we will have a standard of what we're going to be checking for and go from there. And this is for a public comment, I guess, is we probably will not be registering any of these until at least April, by the time we can get the plates in and everything. So we're probably not going to actually start registering until April 1. I'll give some time.
Brenda, does the plan to each year issue new plates, put a new sticker on them?
New sticker.
Any further comments or questions for the chief? Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2019-40 as presented? Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor of passing 2019-40? Signal my five as saying aye. Does opposed?
Thank you very much.
Up next, Brenda Dringer, City Clerk Treasurer Resolution to approve, request of approval of resolution 2020-5.
Hello, council. Regarding our discussion the prior month, I invested the $4,700,000 into what is generally called a liquid fund. To date, we have $5,400, excuse me, $5,601.59 in the first month of that investment. And I use the term investment. It is actually a liquid fund that if we saw the need to have the money tomorrow, you told me tonight we needed the money tomorrow morning, that those funds are liquid and I could have them back to the city. And those are the type of funds I plan to use. At this point in time, I do not plan to use a five to seven-year and tie up monies for that length of time. I would rather use a three-to-six-month CD and have liquid accounts. Liquid meaning they give us a per-day interest rate of the top dollar and then I can get it back soon as I need it. So that being said, the request for the change, if we could go to item number four, and I believe it is close to, it's on the back page where you would sign. The reading of the ordinance before had stated, and we talked about this, the investment officer shall request approval of amounts invested at the city council meetings. I would propose that we change that number two of reporting, the investment officer shall report status and amounts of investments, including interest earned at the monthly council meetings. Any questions?
So you're adding this or you?
Exchanging the wording.
Exchanging the words.
Present. Did you have a question?
So 2020-5 is an amendment to what investment policy?
2019-7. That was a resolution. And so 20- 7 is a resolution. So this resolution would be to amend the previous resolution.
So resolution 20-20, 2020-5 is really just an amendment to section six, subsection four of 2019-7?
Yes, sir. The only, the only difference right there.
The mirror did any sign off on those amendments?
Can my deputy sign off on them? She is on the bank accounts, on every bank account that the city has. Right. Yes. As well, as well as the personnel director. Both women in my office can sign off on any bank account or any amendment. Right. But may I make a suggestion? Right now, we have $9 million in the general account. And using $4 million of that in a month's time, we gained over $5,000 in interest. And if that money is liquid and I can move it back and forth and back and forth, and I'm sorry, that, I don't mean to sound lackadaisical about that because I take that position very, very seriously. If I could take that money, that is liquid. That liquid meaning we can have it tomorrow if you want that. And if I could take that and invest it for, move it for a month and bring it back and take another amount, or if we find another amount coming in that we can use, then we immediately get that into the bank because one day, one day in January of doing that, when all the paperwork was completed to do this, one day in January was $195 you didn't have in your general account. But then, when we added the other part to it, for the next month, we had $548.44. But one month where I put that was $200 that wasn't there.
I'm just wondering if maybe we add some verbiage or something in here about investing in non-liquid funds or, you know, I mean, or something like that.
You already have that in another resolution that says that it cannot be invested, let's see, on resolution 2019-16, it says desires to allow the investment of public funds of the city for more than two years and not more than five years. Not to invest, not to exceed 25% of the total portfolio of public funds invested by the city. So that, that means I'm not going to say, oh, yay, tomorrow, and go invest $9 million or to liquidate it. These, these banks that I'm using are approved and you cannot use any facility that is not on the state board of accounts list of approvals. In 2019-6, you approved a resolution that says, whereas the city of Greensburg desires pursuant to allow banks outside the political subdivision to submit quotes on public funds certificates of deposits. So I can, I just find the best that there is in the state, put the money in it, do the best I can do.
We do have a lot of work here. Steve, a lot of cardists can help on this topic. And if you are okay with carrying that at the moment, we can always come back and bring it. It's okay? Mr. Howe?
Yes?
Come on up to the microphone. Our attorney, Mr. Stephen, will take care of the time. You'll have two minutes. He'll give you a one-minute warning or so and we'll let you know when your time's up. If you don't mind, state your name for the record and please feel free to get in.
My name's Herschel Howe. I live around West Knight Street, Hill Crescent Division. And my question is, I don't understand why just one person, or maybe I'm not understanding the whole thing, has control of $9 million. I just have a question. Huh?
Because she's the elected official. She's the financial officer of the subdivision. She's the financial officer of the political subdivision.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's what her elected job is.
Oh, I didn't know.
Yeah.
So she don't have to go to anybody. She can just invest the money as she wishes.
And if you don't like it, you gotta run somebody against her.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any further questions or comments for Brenda?
Do you have a person's, or where's your deposit?
Excuse me?
The money that's on, what fund is it on?
Right now, the $4,700 is divided up among five, five accounts. Five accounts, and so the interest goes back to that fund. There are, there are funds available that would go into the general fund. It is, we, we keep a record of that and it's, are even like at the water companies and Donna and I work with that amount and we have worked together to find, to separate the money into the correct fund.
Should that note be a part of the resolution? I don't believe that's anywhere in writing.
It was on line one.
I must have missed that, not this.
I was wondering if I was going to discuss it before. It's taken out of MDA. It should go back in?
That's just standard procedure, Daryl. I'm sorry. I, I don't know that it's written anywhere. But let me assure you, if the state board of accounts should come in, and they do on an annual basis to audit, and that money was taken out and invested and the, the interest did not go back into those funds, then I'm, I do answer to the state board of accounts.
I mean, but one way to hurt to just add a line in here, I'm trying to figure the appropriate place, but we could add a line just to just clarify that.
I think that it's there.
And, and the reason I'm asking, and you guys can correct if I'm wrong, because maybe it's that dream, I don't know. I thought when we discussed this, when we passed the 2019-7, we said all the interest was going back into the general fund. I, I remember that discussion.
I, I would never have considered putting, you know, water or wastewater into the general fund. That's, you can't do that.
Well, I, I'm a little confused because like I said, I know we had that, that discussion.
Right. I would like to tell you a little more about my expertise because they have the final dollars and I know I'm working for the city and not for the county, but the 2019 Decatur County Treasurer's Office, which I was in charge of at that time, earned over $258,000 in interest income for the county.
Any further comments or questions, Brenda?
So each month you come in with, before, what monies were invested?
Yes. Where they're at, where they're invested, and what they're, yes. How much? What deposit?
Well, yeah, I mean, she would have, she would have, she has control to the extent that she's the defense. She can't, she can't invest more than what the investment policy says.
And right here, it says that I cannot invest more than 25%. It says right, it says in the previous resolution that you signed that, one moment, let me find it again.
While you're looking for that, Brenda, Mr. Howe, I, I believe your question was, can she just invest up to $9 million? There is a, a res, it's in the resolution.
I don't have the resolution.
She cannot invest more than 25% of that.
I read that a moment ago, but I don't see it at this moment. Oh, here we go. Resolu-, uh, this was on ordinance 219-16. It was signed, it was passed on the first day of July in 2019. And C, at the time, an investment of public funds of the city is made having a stated final maturity that is more than two years, but not more than five years. The total such investments of the city may not exceed 25% of the total portfolio of public funds invested by the city, including balances and transactions. And what we're talking about is investments. I have control of the bank accounts and where the bank accounts are held. And I can move the money without coming before the council to the best interest-bearing account for a checking account that I can find. I have that option afforded to me unless you change it. By the state of Indiana, that's the law, right, Chris? I am the financial officer and I, by virtue of my elected office, I make those, I make those decisions. Is that right?
Correct.
That, that's. Statutorily, she's the person that can say where the money is held. Where the money is held, it's a totally different thing. Two totally different things.
Yes.
I do believe that the statute affords her the ability to make investments.
And on that statute, 2019-16, you made a mistake to wait when they approved that and say it was for investment of public funds for a period of two to five years, just got the 25%. And it doesn't put in mention investment of public funds that are being for a time of less than a year.
Correct. That's not counted. And I think that what we're trying to end it out last year, like I said, including small funds. That's what we're trying to take in, but 2020, because that's short-term. A long-term investment is not chasing this.
A long-term is not, a ladder program is not.
Correct. But on a short, uh, I did not see any of the question. It's short-term.
This, well, the 2019-7, what we commented last week said, it said, any investment shall be brought for the county. And the CD is technically invested.
And Kevin, I agree with you.
Right. Brenda?
But that language is changed with this one.
Because we're, that's what we're making.
Right. With this one, if you take that approval out, this will put it in a report.
I think that's what Brenda was trying to accomplish. Okay. That's fine. I'm gonna make sure everybody's on the same page.
But I come back to the under-two-years investment. So where is it?
Right, you need to, that's. Not counted. Correct.
Can I, may I ask, Kevin, why you believe that?
Per state statutes, what's the motion to invest in a short-term?
You have to have the available funds.
On that question, I'm just asking, on a short-term, under-two-years, if it's not in writing in our ordinances, what's the maximum that you can invest?
And I don't know the answer to that question.
There is not a state statute for the amount because it varies so much from city to city.
That would be my, I mean, my guess would be that there is not a state statute cabinet because it's left to the local, the local level subdivision to decide how much they want to invest. Presumably, there may be an administrative code policy or administrative code provision that the state board of accounts has promulgated state motives. I don't know the answer to that question. I'm, I'm spit that out, so.
I would say that's essential. The money's relatively available over in the directions of CDs. It's things that you don't need to be out of, but available. It's not the stock market or something.
But the $4,700 that is earning this interest right now, there is no fees. There, we didn't pay any fees to, for, to find it, to find that. Those were my phone calls to the various banks to find out where the best amount was at. And no, there, there is no fees to get that money back tomorrow.
I think the counselor Fleetwood's going to put it in an investment.
If I put it in an investment, a CD, or, that's what I'm saying, I should then have to come before the board and report, you know, I put $2 million in a CD for three months, six months, nine months. And this is the interest it will earn while being held in there. When you do a CD, yes, if we needed that money, there would be a fee to take that out. But I plan, I, I have a good staff and I trust my staff to over, review it with me to find, to make sure that those monies, according to the budgets and money and funds adieu, are, are not going to be gone when you need to use them.
I don't really think that it's a trust issue that we're talking about here. I'll just speak for myself. I would think you would want some kind of protection for yourself, too. I guess what I'm trying to say, I think we all need to have some kind of a buy-in on this.
What type buy-in, do you want? If I, if I call the banks in the morning and they tell me that I can get CDs at 2.58% for 30 days, but that wasn't what it was today because we all know we were in a slump and I'm just waiting on the changes. I'm patiently waiting on the changes. If I find that out tomorrow, I can't invest for a month. I couldn't get a CD for three months, 30 days, if I, if I felt like I was getting a fantastic amount of interest from it.
The previous resolution allows you that. It just meant you had to come and get authorization for the amount.
But what if I don't know that I can do that ahead of time? What if I'm not, what if it's not available to me? Let's not use in the morning. That's kind of pushing it. What about if I find out Friday that Trust Indiana or one of the other banks that I've invested in before says to me, we'll give you 2.58% for three months for $2 million? I have to wait till the next meeting, the next council meeting to be able to do that?
Maybe we have an idea of what we're looking to invest and then we can find those best, or we can move that money around whenever it fits best or what we're going to get our best rates for it.
I don't understand what you mean, Jamie.
I'm thinking if we've got, if we've got $4.7 million that we're investing right now, right? We've got that. Then you're saying, well, there's other money here you want to invest. How much? Where's it coming from? Right? That's all we're saying is we'd like to acknowledge where that's coming from, what that amounts are. I think maybe, maybe that's not what we're saying. And then at least we have an understanding of what those amounts are, where they're coming from. I have no problem with the investment. I think that's, I think we, I think we all want that.
I, I think, I feel like that as the city clerk treasurer, that I have expressed what I intend to do and keep the best interest of the city in my heart and use my knowledge and expertise in investing the city funds. And the rest of that has to be chosen by the council.
Well, and if I may, challenging a question, looking up, looking at the statutes to try and get an answer for Mr. Kevin Fleetwood's question. There is a specific statute directing the investment funds and securities. So in terms of what can be invested in the area, it's statutorily defined. So for instance, if, if the clerk were to want to invest in municipal securities or equity securities, that has a cap of 25% of the total amount of the fund. General investment, it doesn't specify. So essentially, what I'm telling you is there is a statutory scheme in place at the state level that would have limitations on what our treasurer can do legally. Regardless of charter, yes. Regardless of term, yes. Yes. So if, and it would depend, and, and again, you've been watching me sit here, so that's how long I've had to look at it.
Well, I just, I just, let me honestly say, I don't, I, I think the best of rights are great, and it is.
Right.
I just think it's interesting that we took the time on two to five-year investments to put a cap on it, but on under-two-year investments, we just kind of said, oh, whatever.
Well, what I can tell you is statutorily, the only one that, the only investment that allows for a local-level ordinance is two- to five-year investments. It's.
So the under-two years is controlled by state.
Right. And that's, yeah, so, and that's for, if anyone wants to look at it, it's five thirteen nine dash five point seven is the Indiana statute that allows for the adoptment of an ordinance five dash thirteen dash nine dash five point seven. But all of the statutory provisions that are under chapter nine, so five dash thirteen dash nine, all of them, I'd say, would.
That was included in the ordinance of two nineteen sixteen.
Yeah.
So, Chris, I have a question. If I'm not planning to invest longer than two to five years, then I would come to the, if the council wants, then I come before them to see if I can invest for that length of time, right, in the amount of money that I want to invest?
Say that question again?
By state statute. If I choose to invest longer than two years, not more than five, then I come before the board and ask for permission to do so.
That would be that way.
And anything under that, I follow state guidelines on with the state board of accounts making sure that my funds are available to invest.
That would be my understanding.
I, I don't have anything else to add, Mayor.
So basically, with twenty-five percent, you would be able to invest up to two point two, a little two point two.
For, for two to five years?
That's a two five. You can invest anything.
Right.
For a short term.
In, in various mechanisms. So for instance, if she, if the clerk determined that she wanted to invest in, like I said, mutual or municipal securities, they could bail that. That, it has nothing to do with your local ordinance. State statute says she can't do more than twenty-five percent of the fund if she has the funds available. So I, I would say it would probably involve a reading, a little bit more detailed reading of this particular statutory code. But additionally, with the election, with her elections, she is tasked with knowing what those are and, and we're acting in accordance. And I would also say, within that same statutory scheme, are the safeguard provisions that the state board of accounts has in terms of accounting and receipts and what, you know, what banks are being used, what investment mechanisms are being used. That's all statutorily defined. So the clerk treasurer could not just, she couldn't, for lack of a better word, just go put it all on black. I mean, she's got to, she's got to follow the statutory scheme that's laid out for her or the board of accounts is going to come after her.
The state board of accounts has a list of acceptable institutions that I'm allowed to use and they send me that list and I have that list.
So, and I, and I guess what I would say, to boil this down to the legal side of it, if what you're asking for is in resolution twenty dash, twenty twen- I, I think what you're looking at is in twenty twenty dash, whatever number that is, five. Is whether or not you really want to amend twenty nineteen, uh, seven as far as do you want her to beg forgiveness or ask permission? See, if you want her to come to you before she goes to invest something, that's the way it's currently. If you want her to come report to you what she did, that's even what she's asking. That's my understanding. That's all right, right?
Yes.
But again, I think it's worth re-reading, it's not a recent investment.
Not.
So while we may not have garnered as much on the last month this week, we could have, we should have. It won't be that we lost investment. So I, I would recommend that you give Brenda the ability, use her skill set that she brought with her from county and help, and we can always go back. We can, if you think it's, give her the opportunity to prove herself and see what you can do.
I'll make motion that we go ahead and pass her to motion one point dash five. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, if I counsel, in all those in favor, single five percent, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you for your attendance, I appreciate being able to talk with you.
Okay, that concludes old business. We will move on to new business. We have Mr. Monty Shields with us from the Greensburg Adult Center to discuss some upgrades to the internet service at the adult center. Good evening.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. My, my name is Monty Shields, I'm the director of the adult center out on East Main Street. Try to make a short story shorter. First of all, thank you, council and mayor, for all the support we've had at the center. We do appreciate it. A few weeks ago, I think it was roughly three weeks ago, I was getting ready to start my second pot of coffee and I noticed the internet was exceedingly slow. I checked the speed test, I checked it against my phone, and indeed it was. I called ETC to see if they were having problems, they were not. That's when I became aware of the internet plan that we are on. We're on a month-to-month basis at the center. They're on, it's a ten megabit plan. To give you an idea of a speed comparison at home, I'm running about three hundred. So it is not fast. The usage there at the center on the internet is not particularly heavy. The crowd that I deal with is not what you would call computer savvy. So most of the use is going to be done through my computer. Right now, if I really had need for something in a hurry, I'll just get on my phone and check it there. I went ahead and asked some questions of ETC since I had them on the phone. You saw in your packet what we're currently paying, which is just at sixty dollars per phone and internet. I'm advised that plan no longer exists and that pretty shortly it will be discontinued. That's when I said, what happens after that? Then you'll have to be upgraded or the plan's set for you. So I just went ahead and did the investigation, put it together, sent it to Brenda. She suggested that I bring it to your attention here. So you will be able to expect in the very near future an increase of the phone and internet at the adult center, depending on the term you set. Currently, it's on a month, a month basis. If you set a longer term, be it a year, two years, three years, five years, you're going to get a little rate. You'll see the increase go anywhere from, and this is above what we're currently paying, the increase will be anywhere from five hundred and four to nine hundred and thirty-six dollars based on ETC, based on the quote that you have in your hand. I would suggest that, I don't know who does it, I don't know if the board works, it may be worth negotiating. I just really did this to let you know that this is coming to a headshot.
Questions?
Brenda, do you have any questions?
I believe that that comes from the council.
Just my understanding, I guess, because I didn't realize, I didn't realize we're paying for your phone and your internet actually until we saw this today. I didn't know that that was coming out of that account. And I don't know that it's been really well discussed on budget. So what other things, I, I know, I just, I got a copy of the lease. I haven't actually got a chance to go through all that, but what else is the city?
The city owns the building, we lease it from them for one dollar a year and it's paid in full up through 2050. The city pays our utilities, including internet, phone, electricity. We don't have gas that I'm aware of. Oh, excuse me, that's incorrect, there is gas lying in there. So you have gas bills as well. Those are all paid by the city. And I believe it's been that way since 2004 when the building was put in.
James, I would tell you, or councilman, council members, sorry. It's in section one. It's actually the, it's actually the first paragraph. If you read, if you read beginning of the bottom line of section one, my first page, and follow it in to the next one. So, and I will say, the lease does not specifically say internet, but that's probably to remember, those part of these things. It does say all telephone, local, the cable television costs, electric and, and gas bills. So water, sewer, so I, based on my read of this lease, you, the city is responsible for water, sewer, electric, gas bills and all telephone, cable television costs. And I would presume that that's inclusive of internet usage. And my, my quick read of the lease didn't find any additional things that, things that were on the list. My guess is you don't have cable television out there, yes?
Yeah, there's TVs out there. It's on ETC payroll.
But it's all funded through ETC.
Price is right, oh boy.
It's all bundled and we're changing the bundles.
But.
Says all bundled, we're changing the bundles.
Yeah. This is an old, old bundle, I'm guessing is probably one of the oldest they have because she says the TV's continued. They haven't operated in years, so I would just expect, and they may let it drag on for quite a while if they don't pay attention to it, I don't know. So I really just kind of want to make it clear that it's coming. At the time it comes, that might be the time to negotiate, see what happens.
And I would say you, you as the city would have the ability to, because it's not necessarily this body, but just the city, through the mayor's office, would have the ability to investigate other options as the council provider, if you wanted to communicate how common it is to go and see, see which one you can best get on.
Just, there's a question on mine, who does the city get their firm money with, ETC as well?
Yeah.
I mean, Chad's a nice guy. I mean, he's also a businessman, but.
Is the council okay with us investigating it since it sort of is covered by the lease? I mean, we can investigate this separately, separate time, in the budgetary, line items of what's contributed to the adult center budget time. But in the meantime, sure that they still operate and work with Brenda. While handling that, if someone are willing to increase it. If for some reason there becomes a need for additional appropriation across that portion of it, I can imagine that it will be, it won't be that big of an increase, so.
You said your, your computers the only one that you use, basically?
It's the only one that I use. I have media room with four of the computers. I have a small amount of people that will make use of them. I've been trying to have classes where I teach them how to use it, both for their own education for a chance, like with Facebook to contact family, to keep up with certain things. I'm getting a small amount taken.
So you run through a router, then?
Yes, wires.
I mean, there are ways to, you can go to different bundles and have this. You have this hardwired in, you can actually get less. Anytime you hardwire it, and a lot of people, you, you can, to the test speed.
Yeah.
And you're not going to get what you, unless you're hardwired and, I mean, you hardwired your TVs then.
We're supposed to have ten megas on getting about two point six.
Yeah. And it's brick building, so that's, that's, but, um, yeah, I mean, if they, if they do come in and upgrade you, you know, it might be something on the line, so I can hardwire this.
I just.
Computers, even your TVs.
I can look at it, see what they can.
Faster.
Look at that. Same thing, when I move my modem at home, it changes where I hit, hit my power and heat at.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's pretty drastic.
Yes.
Drop if you run through a router.
Yeah, I'm three hundred downstairs and one hundred up, so yeah.
Okay, I'll take care of it, if that's okay with everybody. I don't think there will be any type of action, but we'll just be looking at it. Actually, come in, sir. Are you ready? Okay. Up next, we have John Dooley with the Greensburg Aviation Mission about the salary ordinance. This, I have a, feel free to come on, gentlemen. I have a quick comment before we actually get to according to this. There was another, while we were going through this, which they'll explain in a minute, there was amendment that was noticed, or there was an error, typographical error, made when we approved this salary ordinance as twenty twenty dash one, which added Communications Director Anne Brandis salaries. The consultant that was outside that was working on this omitted to change the police and fire chief salaries. They originally said sixty-one thousand five hundred. They now reflect what you guys did pass in 2019 as the salary needs at sixty-one. So it was just a typographical error. Julie, not in the treasurer's office, is sure to mean that it doesn't wait for anything to the state board of accounts because we haven't paid up to that amount yet for this year. So that was just a typographical error in the one that we did earlier this year. The reason that Mr. Dooley is here, Dr. Dooley is here, is about the airport salaries. We'll turn that over to you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council, for having us here. The Airport Board last Monday at our monthly meeting passed a resolution to update all our salaries and wages. And so we're here to get the, get this put in the city ordinance also with that. Of course, we're requesting no money from the city. These monies come from, are generated by the airport themselves and all of these salaries and wages fall within the airport budget that's been previously approved. What we've passed out, or what Bill passed out, is the current or the old section. You'll see the airport section there and I believe you've been passed out the new, am I correct? That the, the difference is that you can see the administrative personnel and board secretary remain unchanged. The airport labor, the part-time labor goes from ten to twelve dollars. We've eliminated the assistant manager position and we've made changes from fifteen to sixteen dollars for the airport manager labor and his, his monthly salaries is up at four eighty, which, which is basically one hour per day or thirty hours per week. And we've incorporated those changes and we need that incorporated in the city ordinance also. We're requesting the city to do so. Field any questions, if anybody has any questions about.
Was this ordinance under twenty twenty dash two?
So you should have a try the old and the new, obviously you can make comparisons, but.
For the salary ordinance.
Well, we had it, we had this in twenty twenty dash one because we had Kristin's position and we changed, so we had made the adjustment already. So we're going back to the twenty one. Because the two minutes inversion's on the. I'll make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty dash two on first reading with the amendments made tonight under the airport section. And the police and. Any further questions? All those in favor of passing twenty twenty dash two on first reading, say a aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council.
Chief Bridges.
Okay. Chief Bridges, request for the city Greensburg to be the financial holder of the inclusion park.
So I emailed out a letter on kind of progress that I have made since coming, I believe, in November, December, about the idea of an inclusion park. With plans moving forward in that, I've already talked with the treasurer about the city possibly being the financial holder of any type of grants or donations that we would receive for this inclusion park. So I have met with a, the project director from Playground Equipment Services over in Cincinnati, Ohio, another outfit with Miracle Playgrounds, which they work close together, and then a doctor out of Cincinnati University that is helping me hopefully bring this park to Greensburg and that. So like I said, very, very beginning stages. I know this is going to be a few-year project, but that's why I'm going to go ahead and come to you and ask for permission for the city to hold the funds for me.
And should find a location for that.
Yes, we did find a location last Thursday. That was Mr. Barker and those three individuals and there is a park to where we're going to be able to upgrade a lot of their out-of-complaint equipment with the new equipment and we're going to include. equipment with the new equipment, and we're going to include what the new equipment they put in a couple of years ago, we're going to bring that into this park, too, so I guess there will be, it's going to be linked up with the water pad there, so that way the kids, like I said, you have a lot to do in that area, so.
Um, would that be a county? Parks are county? There's, there's going to be issues or?
Not that I can find, when, when Chief Bridges asked me, I researched it, and as long as we're able to hold it, we can hold it. So, would you, I mean, because, I mean, who's going to be doing the work, Parks?
The building of it, or the maintenance?
The building.
The building of it will be done through the equipment, Playground Equipment Services out of Cincinnati, because it's, they're going to have to put down a certain type of surfacing, and, or, a special type of equipment to where it's going to take a lot more than what our parks can handle, so actually it'll be.
He has people that install things to the county, so I just didn't know how that would work. He, he is employed by the county, whose part is.
Correct, so I did ask that question a little bit, because I was going to go to, I, I first thought maybe I would need to go to the County Commissioners or County Council to get their approval, and he stated that he can act as his.